Excuse me ma'am. It's time.
Good morning everyone, welcome to this November 4th, 2025, leading of the Lewis Park Commissioner who is like leading. I congratulate you, President, of the United States of America, and to your republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's see, okay, I guess all my favorite people aren't here, how fun. I am Kansas Payne, I'm Chair of this operation here, and to my left is Vice Chair Tom Rawl. Morning Tom Rawl.
Good morning.
And to his left is Brandie Grandy, who will be our Recording Secretary, and to her left is Jenny Chambers, who is head in our public works and. Morning there. To my right is Ann Hunt House, the senior member of our term, of our group, he's a guy with all the experience and keeps. Well, anyway, and to his right is Roger Balls, our C A O, and the gentleman from the county attorney's office at court tomorrow, so I guess they'll be in later if they get done with court. Okay, that being said, we have agendas on the front table, a signing list, if you're here, please sign in. And. I think that's everything, so now we can move into the consent action item 3A. Roger Rawl will do this for us.
Chairman and Commissioners, item 3A on the agenda is Resolution 2025-120 declaring county property surplus property, staff recommends approval, thank you very much Commissioners.
Okay, any questions from the Commission? They have to declare a filing cabin. Surplus. Amazing. Any question, well, seeing none, is there any public comment? Any public comment regarding this surplus? But, no, seeing none, we have motion please.
Chairman, I have moved to approve consent action item 3A, Resolution 2025-120, current county property surplus property, waiting by Roger Ball, second.
Then moved consecutively that we approved this resolution, is there any further discussion from the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving this consent action item, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, both same time, motion passes unanimous. Moving right along into our action items. Dan Carlin. Will present us with Resolution 2025-116 authorizing the submission of a Montana coal and dam program infrastructure spending grant. And Dan, tell us all about this.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners, for the record, Dan Carlin, County Attorney. According to today's Resolution 2025-116, to submit planning grant application to the Montana coal and dam program or concept. This grant received is in the amount of $30,000 for infrastructure planning activity. The planning grant has a minimum match of 20%. Bridge Division has budgeted $8,000 in match for a total project cost $38,000. We will select a consultant on our bridge on-call roster to complete this work in accordance with payment policy. Work will include updating the county bridge inventory, reviewing national bridge inventory rating work and D I R reports. Received from N V T, Lewis and Clark County's Office of System Bridges, onsite inspections of bridges identified to have critical deficiencies. Assistant updating a five-year capital improvement improvements planer, provide planning level estimating costs associated with any needed repairs and or replacements. And assistant prioritizing the county's bridge needs. After this step is complete, the consultant will also prepare a preliminary engineering engineering report or P P R. For the Bird Tail Road Black Creek Bridge, assist with public hearings, prepare the M C F application, assist staff in responding to inquiries from the M C F program during the evaluation process. And assist staff of legislative hearings. That recommends the board of county commissioners an approved Resolution 2025-116 to also authorize the chair to sign up quickly and set grant application. You can see on the screen there, that's the location of the Bird Tail slash Black Creek Road Bridge, we've had multiple discussions about that one. Very recent, so, yeah, any additional question, I can answer those now.
I, I have one question, Dan. The $38,000 that is the amount of this, this grant, all of it isn't going to go to the Bird Tail Bridge? Or is it?
Chair Payne, Commissioner, so this effort is pretty extensive, so the preliminary engineer report that I mentioned. It takes quite a bit of time, and that is all required to go into the application, the M C F. This is just the application, so once that's complete, if we are awarded that grant, then we move into that as a construction, right? We are awarded that, similar to, because the Clemmons Bridge Grant that we received. That's a much larger dollar amount that we would then use to design stall, the replacement structure at the Bird Tail location. So, short answer, yes, this is all for Bird Tail Bridge, with some ancillary items to evaluate other bridges to update our C I P as well.
Okay. That's good. I believe Commissioner Hunt House tonight did a little tour. They were going up to Augusta, drove through the. The detour that the heavy trucks have to take while still allowing the passenger vehicles direct route, and I was very impressed with how that all be, so whoever you were doing. Is there any further comments from the Commission?
Just Andy Chair Payne. Thank you, Dan. Good report, and I just, just to reiterate and to kind of follow up on his question, this does a lot more than the P R for the Bird Tail Bridge. Important, and we've been really successful in taking M C F grant, ask for timing projects. This is another opportunity to update our bridge inventory, looking for just, just for those that might be watching, how often, I mean, we try to continually look at our infrastructure, our bridge infrastructure, but. How often do we have to inspect our bridges and, and that document, kind of living document, that we're always looking updated, bridge continue to wear and change this time and weather. So just kind of a little bit of information or education on that. Sure, Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunt House, and so. Federal law, it states that bridges were supposed to be inspected, bridges over 20, we are supposed to be inspected every two years. If there's some sort of deficiency that is of concern, they will shrink that act rate to a year or six months, or sometimes even three months. Like we saw on the North Mountain Bridge at one point in time, well as the Headland Bridge, which is recently replaced. So that's, that's the federal mandate, it's a minimum of every two years, you must be inspected. Doesn't mean that that will update our capital improvement plan for bridges, that is a process that's a little more formal. We definitely sit down with the, the Bridge Department, Road Rich, or the manager. And, and go through those, sequence those, discuss those with the consultants, that's a bit of a process, something that we like to do at least every four years, but what we've been standing application. It is required to be in that preliminary engineering report, so we take that opportunity to do so, Ben. In this particular application, we are pretty confidently knowledgeable on their top priority, which is the Bird Tail Bridge, which is why we are specific in that, that's the media we want to pursue. But, good question. Chair Payne, yeah, it, it does, thank you very much.
Any other questions, is there any public comment on this grant? Seeing none, none, I have a motion please.
Chair Payne, I have moved to approve Resolution 2025-116 as you presented. Second.
And moved consecutively that we approve the Resolution 2025-116. Is there any further comment from the Commission?
Chair Payne.
And.
I just would like to remind everybody of the wonderful work that's been done to get us to the point, to this point, we've got temporary bridges in place. Thanks to the good work of the Public Works Department and, and our finance staff. And, and now we go about the, the long-term solution to the, to the problem and, and I think that. Certainly need to be complimented on, on handling this job very well. To this point, and I'm sure. So, looking, looking forward for progress and the opportunity to, for you to. Put together plans to apply for state assistance to get this bridge. Thank you.
Thank you Tom. Is there any other comments, seeing no further comments. It has been moved and seconded that we approve this. Grant application, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimous.
Jessica Mika, good morning Jessica.
Next on our agenda, for the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Browntine Property Services Incorporated. And it will be presented by our friend Jessica Mika.
Good morning Jessica. Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners, my name is Jessica Mika, Special District Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. For you this morning is a contract with Browntine Property Services Incorporated to provide snow removal and related maintenance within various rural improvement districts throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under this contract will be completed on an on-call basis as the need for this maintenance arises in R I D. This maintenance was solicited for a request for qualifications advertised in the Helena Independent Record on September 20th, 2025, and September 27th, 2025. Statements qualifications or S O Qs were accepted and unsealed on a rolling basis beginning Monday, October 6th, 2025, and the acceptance period closed on October 20th, 2025. This type of solicitation was used with the intent to create a roster of qualified contractors working through the 2025, 2026 winter season. Because we accepted S O Qs on a rolling basis, contracts will be presented to you as they are developed. For this third round, there are six statements qualifications that have been received, reviewed, and accepted by public works department staff with rates negotiated and contracts drafted based on the information included in the S O Q. We anticipate a final presentation with the last two contracts for a total of 20 this season. Staff recommend approval of the contract with Browntine's Property Services Incorporated and operate as chair of science contract officer. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jessica. In the interest of. We've got four or five of these contracts for snow removal, and I don't want to bore anyone to tears, but we have to do each one of these individually because they are individual contracts. And so you will say approximately the same thing. The, the county attorney's office, okay, so they are the ones we've talked to about this, each one must be done individually. And this is. Getting ready for winter, it's what all of those of us who live in Montana all our lives, we think, oh yeah. Blame the extra food, the extra fuel, the extra hay, and, okay, so that's what you do. Any further questions from the Commissions? Oh, is there any public comment about this contract? Seeing none, let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I have moved to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Bowtime Property Services Incorporated, as explained by Justice Mika. Second.
Been seconded, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this contract. Is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor, approving this contract, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I, all opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimous. The next item on our agenda is contract between Lewis and Clark County and First Choice Lawn and Snow LLC is by Jessica Mika, go for it.
Thank you Chair Payne, again for the record, Jessica Mika, Special District Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Before you this morning is a contract with First Choice Lawn and Snow LLC to provide snow removal and related maintenance within various rural improvement districts throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under this contract will be completed on an on-call basis as the need for the maintenance arrives within R I D. This contract was listed through the same R F Q process as described in the previous agenda item. Staff recommend approval of the contract with First Choice Lawn and Snow LLC and authorize the chair to sign contract after, thank you.
Thank you Jessica, is there any comment from the, are any questions from the Commission? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I would entertain a motion.
Chair Payne, I have moved to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and First Choice Lawn and Snow LLC. Sure.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this contract, is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimous. Item 4D. On our agenda is the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Helena Dirt Works LLC, centered by Jessica Mika, go for it.
Thank you Chair Payne, before you this morning is a contract with Helena Dirt Works LLC to provide snow removal and related maintenance within various rural improvement districts throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under this contract will be completed on an on-call basis as the need for this maintenance arrives in the R I D. This contract was listed through the same R F Q process as described in Agenda Item 4B. Staff recommend approval of contract with Helena Dirt Works LLC and authorize the chair to sign contract after, thank you.
Thank you Jessica, is there any questions from the Commission? Is, Frank. Is there any public comment? Any public comment?
Chair Payne, I have moved to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Helena Dirt Works and Clark LLC, second, as explained by Justice Mika.
Okay. Is there any further comment from people? All those, it's been moved seconded that we approve this contract, all those in favor of approving the contract, we. Tell them the Dirt Works LLC, as explained by Jessica Mika, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimous. Or we are moving around a lot. Next item on our agenda, contract between Lewis and Clark County and Silver Tip Sprinklers and Landscaping Incorporated, as explained by Justice Mika.
Thank you, thank you Chair Payne, before you this morning is a contract with Silver Tip Sprinklers and Landscaping Incorporated. To provide snow removal and related maintenance within various rural improvement districts throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under this contract will be completed on an on-call basis as the need for this maintenance arrives in R I D. This contract was listed through the same R F Q process as described in Agenda Item 4B. Staff recommend approval of the contract with Silver Tip Sprinklers and Landscaping Incorporated and authorize the chair to sign contract after, thank you.
Thank you Jessica, is there any question from the Commission? No, is there any public comment on this contract? Seeing none. Let's have a motion.
Chair Payne, I have moved to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Silver Tip Sprinklers and Landscaping Incorporated, as presented, second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this contract with Silver Tip Sprinklers and Landscaping. Is there any further comment from the, from the Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving this contract, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those. Not approving, okay, indicate by saying aye. Motion passes unanimous. The next item on our agenda is contract between Lewis and Clark County and Team Green LLC, as presented by Jessica Mika.
Thank you Chair Payne, before you this morning is a contract with Team Green LLC to provide snow removal and related maintenance within various rural improvement districts throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under this contract will be completed on an on-call basis as the need for this maintenance arrives in R I D. This contract was listed through the same R F Q process as described in Agenda Item 4B. Staff recommend approval of the contract with Team Green LLC and authorize the chair to sign contract after, thank you.
Thank you Jessica, any questions from the Commission? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comments, I would entertain a motion.
Chair Payne, I have moved to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Team Green LLC, as explained by Jessica Mika.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve this contract, is there any further comment from the Commission? Seeing none, all in favor of approving this contract, as explained by Justice Mika, to indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimous. And last. Item 4D, contract with Lewis and Clark County Valley Sand and Gravel LLC, as explained by Justice Mika.
Thank you Chair Payne, last one today, before you this morning is a contract with Valley Sand and Gravel LLC to provide snow removal and related maintenance within various rural improvement districts throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under this contract will be completed on a non-call basis as the need for this maintenance arises in R I D. This contract was listed through the same R F Q process as described in Agenda Item 4B. Staff recommend approval of the contract with Valley Sand and Gravel LLC and authorize the chair to sign contract after, thank you.
Thank you, is there any question from the Commission?
Chair Payne.
Andy.
Yeah, I'd like, no, softball, I know the answer to this as well, but just, in case somebody might not have been watching on our other. Jessica and Dan, wherever. Okay. And you did touch on it, yeah, and get various R I Ds serviced by this, but why so many? How often we have all of these contracts, we need all of these contracts, just.
Thank you Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunt House, with a great question, and an excellent topic. Excuse me. We have about 150 R I Ds throughout this county, which is a fair amount, so when it snows, we cannot rely on one contractor to. Fully go from one, one district to another, these are sometimes very large subdivisions throughout the valley. So we do solicit a roster of contractors to provide these services so that we can get these services on the ground as soon as possible. This year, we had 20 contractors interested in this R F Q and the state qualification to participate. We are recommending contracts be entered into with all of them, we've had 18 so far, we have two more that will remain and be presented to you at a later time. A couple of these contractors are only interested in doing maybe their own neighborhood. They have a snow plow, they have insurance, they have the ability to plow snow, they may only want to do their specific neighborhood, so a few of these contractors are in that position where they just. Are comfortable with, with that small network, other contractors have multiple trucks, multiple staff, and our bigger snow removal operations, and so those, those people come in as well. We meet with all of these contractors and then try to align the district in areas and based on the workload that they're able to, to take on for the winter season. We develop trigger point with all of our. Districts, so that those contractors know when we get a certain level of snow, two inches, three inches, four inches, what have you, they are to begin plowing. So after any given event, they, they know what that workload is for the day, it helps them plan, it helps us just. Communicate better and make sure that that work is happening as soon as possible after any given snow level.
Thank you.
Yes.
I know the answer to this one too, but I think people might be thinking, so why didn't the county snowplows just start doing this work?
Great question, thank you, Chair Payne, Commissioner Hunt House, and, you know, if we could do that with the staff and the equipment that we have, that would be great, but. Our staff, our county snowplows have to focus on those main corridors, so everybody roads, as you referred to them, now. The, the county road department is focused on keeping those main corridors open, opening those school bus routes first thing. And so it would take quite a bit of time before the county road department was able to get to these secondary types of roads, these subdivision roads. That serve relatively few compared to those main county corridors, so we rely on this, this roster of contractors to provide that additional work. Thank you, thanks Chair.
Yeah, question. Okay, anyway, um. Is the snow plowing, there will be contract with, is that free or through the taxes paid for the, all right, the road improvement districts, does that come out of that part plan?
Chair Payne, yeah, so each of these rural improvement districts have their own fund assigned to them. When, when property owners pay those special assistance, those that are included on their tax bills. Those special assistance go into those funds as revenue, and then each of these snow plowing occurrences. Will be billed to that specific R I D for that specific service for the number of hours that that contractor is on site.
That's kind of what I thought, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding it correct. Tom, do you have anything?
No, just appreciate the great work you do, you track all those R I Ds, and it seems like it runs very smoothly, and people are pretty, pretty happy with what's been done, thank you.
Yep, we have a great team, the special district for public work that, that helps to make things happen.
Okay. Um, seeing no further question, the Commission, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment. Let's have a question.
Chair Payne, I have moved to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Valley Sand and Gravel LLC, as, second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Valley Sand and Gravel LLC. Is there any further comment from? Seeing none, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimous. Now moving along to something a little more unusual. Item 4E is a Resolution 2025-121 adopting updated regulations for the application and review of building. for the application and review of buildings for lease or rent. This is presented to us by Rachel Ward from the planning department. Morning, Rachel.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. For the record, my name is Rachel Ward with the community development and planning department. I'm here this morning for a public hearing regarding proposed updates to the county's buildings for lease or rent. In front of you, you should have a staff report with a copy of these draft regulations with Marka, as well as Resolution 2025-121 with a clean copy as attached. So before I jump into the proposed changes, I'm going to very briefly talk about our current buildings for lease or rent regulations. Our current regulations were adopted in 2013 as a result of Senate Bill 324, which established Title 76, Chapter 8, that created the review process and regulations for buildings for lease or rent. Like a lot of counties, Lewis and Clark County adopted, for the most part, the model regulations that the Montana Department of Commerce and the Montana Association of Counties put together. Those model rights were established to the minimum requirement statute. So specifically, our buildings for lease or rent regulations require that four or more buildings are subject to review by the governing body unless they need one of six exemptions. They're listed on the screen in front of you. I'm gonna specifically point out that I included a map of the zoning districts in Lewis and Clark County. The first exemption to buildings for lease or rent review is for zoning properties that have zoning that addresses elements listed in 76817. So our Part II Howland Valley zoning regulations have been determined to address these elements, and therefore, buildings for lease or rent regulations do not apply in those categories. So it's gonna be everything outside of that. Our Part I zoning districts are on a case-by-case basis determined. If the L R advisor. Other exemptions, I'm not gonna read through this whole list, but other exemptions could include things like permanent ag buildings and in those buildings that are subject to the logging facilities. So getting to the updates that we have in front of you. So the reason for updating the buildings for lease or rent regulations now is threefold. The first is that Senate Bill 174 was passed during the legislative session earlier this year, and it moved the review of RV parks and mobile home parks from the subdivision and flatting act to the buildings for lease or rent chapter. This bill updated definitions in the Montana Subdivision and Flatting Act, which goes to buildings for lease or rent chapter that I just said. And then also requires that the buildings for lease or rent regulations be in compliance with an adopted vote policy.
Would you say that again, Kate? I didn't understand the last three words.
Yeah, for sure. So Senate Bill 174 essentially moved, as I said, RV, mobile home parks from subdivision review to buildings for lease or rent. But then they also included a provision in there that when we were adopting buildings for lease or rent regulations, that they need to be in compliance with an adopted vote policy.
Thank you.
So secondly, the updates that you have in front of you include proposed development standards, and with those standards, variance criteria and review processes. As I mentioned previously, our current regulations are based on model rights from 2013 that address the minimum requirements. However, NCA 768108 allows the governing body to adopt additional review criteria. And to that end, staff has proposed some development standard in part for the mobile home and RV parks that were previously in the subdivision regulations and are now under buildings for lease or rent. But we've also compiled development standards for mini storage and residential units, which are two of the more common buildings for lease or rent. Staff determined that these development standards, they were included because they will provide for consistency in development patterns. Will provide developers and property owners more transparency when going through that review process. And then lastly, we wanted to provide a little more organized structure, provide additional definitions, and clean up some language for consistency and accuracy. That's the element of this update. So in order to adopt the additional development standards, NCA 7681082 allows upon a super majority vote that the commission may adopt additional regulations for the purpose of reviewing four or more buildings for lease or rent that the commission considers necessary to protect public health, safety, and general welfare. Statute also clarified that a super majority needs a unanimous affirmative vote of the commissioners and counties for their three county commissioners. That means if the commission wishes to adopt these development standards, a unanimous vote. I want to touch on public notice and outreach. As part of this update, we did follow the public's public notice requirements outlined in 768173. We published a notice in the county independent record twice, one on October 4th and the 18th. We posted this notice in the public locations around the county, at least thirty days prior to this public hearing, and have copies of the draft regulations available for public inspection at the clerk and recorder's office, planning office, and the local county. But we also went above and beyond these basic notice requirements. We sent out an email, so we'll see feedback over victim groups, including our area fire chiefs, developers and engineering consultants, and T D Q, the Howland Valley Irrigation District, Waterfalling Protection District, Home and Use Boards, Realtors, Builders Association, and more. And still with two individuals thus far who had general questions, but that's why we've had no comments submitted to our office regarding the app. I want to end, before I wrap up, just want to note that there was one correction that was identified since this draft was provided to you in Section 502 on page 12 of the Montana draft. The highlighted language on your screen that I should say Section 4 and not Section 6. With that, I will conclude my presentation. I'd have the answer questions. Angie Hubbard and Phil Gonzalez are also here who are part of the planning team that worked on this update.
Thank you. This is really an interesting project. Any questions from the commission?
Andy? Chairpin. Good morning. Hi, thank you. Nice job with the document and presentation. Really appreciate it. I just wanted to reiterate. And again, you did touch on this, but I want to make sure we're very clear on the record that not only do we follow the process laid out in Statute 4 notice, we invited over 50 groups to look at this document, weigh in if they'd like, especially our folks that we work regularly with, like the Realtor Association, Building Industry Association, and others. So they had ample opportunity to participate and weigh in on this. And many of these changes are via legislative action taken, drunk having the option. Changes. But those that have been updated, we've given a handful. So that's one. I wanted to affirm that on the record. And then the second thing is just a little bit about process. So making a decision today versus a decision later. Has there been an open period for comment? Quite a while you mentioned it, but I can't. Me too. Thanks, Chairpin.
Yes, Chairpin, Commissioner Hunt-Heldon. Yeah, so the notice of this public hearing, obviously posted in the independent record, we've had notice about for thirty days. Posted in private public places. We have not received any agency or public comments thus far. We could take action today. However, we could wait until, unfortunately, the 11th of the holidays. So Thursday, November 13th would be another appropriate day to take action if you want to contemplate the changes proposed in front of you. Another option, but we met the requirements, the noticing, and at this point, it's just adopting.
Right. Anything else? Tom? Something you just said that sort of confused me. So I'm planning to give approval of these guys' assignments today, but what did you say about November 11?
Chairpin, November 11th is a holiday. Yeah, so we'll have to be here. If you want to take additional time to, yeah, to contemplate the changes, you could take action on this resolution on November 13th. You could also take action today if you wish. I think it's, that was said. Hopefully, what was conveyed.
By assigning this today, it was against the back row of the yellow. The county attorney.
Chairpin, no, they should not. You can't.
I'm very sensitive.
You can adopt the Resolution 2025-21 today if you so wish.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Any public comment?
And I should say this is a public hearing, so that's a little bit funny.
This is a public hearing. Very true. Okay, any public comment? Seeing no public comments, I would entertain a motion.
Chairpin, I would move to approve Resolution 2025-121, adopting updated regulations for the application review of buildings for lease or rent, as explained by Rachel Ward. Second.
And seconded that we approved Resolution 2025-121, adopting updated regulation for the application and review of buildings for lease or rent as of 25. I'm sorry, as explained by Rachel. And is there any further comment from the commission?
Chairpin.
Tom?
I feel like a lot of these changes are because of legislative actions taken. There's been ample time for people to comment. It's gone overboard, in fact, and trying to provide that. I think we're, go ahead. Pass the resolution, and thank you very much for the help this issue handles.
Thank you, Tom. Public comment, I think we will. Okay, can we vote on this now? All those in favor of approving the adoption of the updated regulation as explained by Rachel Ward indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Then. Next on our agenda is procurement director updates. And you will start with the emergency management and the grants and program. So Kyle? Didn't we just have a meeting last night? That's right, we were in our council.
Chairpin, Mr. S. Yes, for the record, I'll certainly sign and be program manager for emergency management for Lewis and Clark County. And yes, we were just saying the last one. All right, so first off, I'd just like to say that we certainly have been busy changing the last few years for emergency management, that there are two of us. Autumn Ashdale is the disaster crisis services coordinator. So having two sets of feet meaning we can cover a lot more ground, which is very productive. Just recently, I was before the commission to ask for permission to apply for the Fire Mitigation 5507 opportunity through State Disaster Crisis Services. This was for wildfire mitigation, mostly countywide. This is a project that we're working jointly with Tri-County Fire Safety Working Group to take all the properties, or as many of the properties as possible, that they have already done assessments on. These are people that we know are interested in mitigation work. I've already expressed the interest. We're now trying to find some funding that will allow contractors to go to those properties and fill out all the work done that Tri-County Fire Safety Working Group prescribed for them. So we applied for about $526,000 total. Part of that is matched, twenty-five percent of the total cost of the project smashed, so it's gonna be provided on the property owner's side in cash and bond. So county side, we are already contracted with Tri-County Fire Safety Working Group, who manage this project for us. We're just applying for the funds and manage. A nice little bit out of that with this particular grant is that management costs are eligible. So we've also asked for additional $20,000 on top of the amount that we asked for the project. And that'll go towards costs that are our program manager in terms of managing the grants, providing or attending future mitigation specific trainings, and then making sure that all of the work is being done as is prescribed. So we're pretty excited about that. That's a big one. We haven't applied for that large amount of wildfire mitigation funding since funding that came out of the North Hills Fire, which is seven years ago now. I will say for the commission, the F and P does not stand for fast. So expectation wise, we've just applied, and we probably will not hear, if anything, we'll hear about some questions they may have or some additions we need to have to the application. But it usually takes about a year before we hear about an award, and then the project is built and half done, and take another two, three years after that. So this is a long-term project. Sort of related to that is that Tri-County Fire Safe Working Group, which is our contractor for wildfire mitigation work. They just put out a new video of the importance of having mitigation work done. Chairpin, I think you saw a video last night. It was presented to the Rural Fire Council, about eight or nine minutes long. Just shows people the importance of planning ahead, having a communication plan with your families so that if you have to be evacuated, you know how to get ahold of them, where you have maybe a set point. Communications during a large disaster can be pretty difficult, so having a plan ahead of time is great. And something that we're finding with comments from citizens after large wildfires, where we've had to do evacuations, is that if they had mitigation work done on their property, it is a much, much easier process for evacuating. There's a lot less stress involved about worrying about your home if you know that it's more defensible and that the wildfire has less of a chance to correct you. So that's one of the things that we're telling folks is have a plan in place for your family and for your property, and if you can get some mitigation work done, all better. People can still sign up for free wildfire risk assessments round Tri-County Fire Safe Working Group. They have two websites. One of them is their acronym, which I always struggle with. P C S F S W G, Tri-County Fire Safe Working Group dot org. The much easier one is firesafe.org. You go on there. That's there for the whole county to go on to the firesafecallin.org, sign up for a free risk assessment. A professional will come out, give you some thoughts about the property. Uh, a professional will come out, give you some thoughts about the property, and then, um, give you in the system and then they, they look for future funding. Another thing that we're working on, so in emergency management. In general, we have a process called the task book and, uh. The, the formal, I guess, description of the task book is, uh. If somebody says that they're a qualified planning section chief. Uh, it means that they've gone through the process of initiating the task book from somebody who knows how to do that job very well. Uh, and then they've been walked through the process of each task that that job was virtually expected to do during an incident or emergency. And each of those tasks have a signature line actually, somebody who knows how to do that particular job. Uh, signed off on whether or not it's been done up the snap basically. And then at the end, uh, once your task book is filled out, there's a review process with the state committee. And they go through all the different experiences that you acquired, discuss whether or not it's, uh, meets the requirement for you to be able to go off. And do that job on your own. And then you get a task book, uh, signed off. And you can get, um, sometimes in the wild land, frame, uh, all their red card. And it's actually a part, it's an unread paper, and it describes which, which jobs John can do, uh. Satisfactorily on and it's been under. Uh, so our program is kind of taking upon ourselves to try to get those qualifications. Uh, perhaps say that so Autumn Ashdale, our PGS coordinator. Just this summer, uh, got her situation unit taskbook signed off. That job, uh, basically for compiling information about an incident, putting it into a pertinent report, making sure that report gets people. How it impacts the county is that a lot of times that report specifically one called two oh nine. Often happens and the abbreviation to numbers and emergency. That report is used by, uh, regional resource centers to determine if there's a scarcity, uh, which incidents get what. And so, um, benefit for us is that we now have.
A scarcity of what?
Uh, resources, they found here. So, um. You know, I think two thousand seventeen wildfire season, uh, was probably the last largest, um. Scarcely resource season that we really had to deal with, and it got down to individual trucks and hand crews and if. You had two fires that really needed one more truck, but you only had one truck, which one get it? And the report that Autumn Ashdale has now sped it up on and qualified to fill out can, can describe our story. It goes to the regional resource centers inside, based on how we've done with the report. For, against what? It, it's very beneficial for any multiple incidents happening in the same county or multiple large incidents happening in the same state. Uh, she's also currently working on her, I think, section chief taskbook, so it'll probably take another year or so. Uh, that's the next level up in the court chair. And then I myself, uh, have a taskbook filled out and I'm qualified to be a liaison. Uh, sometimes I don't feel so because I know there's two lies in the word and I can remember quite where the second one goes. But, uh, the liaison's job is to make sure that all of the different parties involved in this bit for a large scale disaster. Or where what's going on, uh, make sure nobody stepped on anybody's toes in terms of policies, teachers, big things budget. Say you have, uh, multiple things going on, you might have multiple different funding sources, people who are going to check for what's going on with an incident. So that's one of the things that I can, uh, I'm qualified to be on incident. And so these are just individual qualifications on our part, but the neat thing about us getting these done, like I mentioned in that process. Uh, you can then go off and sign off. And so we're, we're completing these for ourselves out of that in the intent, you mentioned that one already. Uh, for other people in the community to initiate their own, uh, we can train and we can observe them working on our. And they can become qualified, go forth and. So, uh, it's a capacity building process.
Sure, pain. I might just ask a question that you, red card certifications, how long are they good for?
Uh, sure, pain, commissioners, so the, the length they can, they're, they're good for as long as you keep them, uh, updated. And so, um, for mine, uh, liaison taskbook that I finished three years ago. Uh, I've been on several incidents and what you do is you, uh, document that you've done the job on a sufficiently sized incident. And you put it in your record and you're considered. Uh, so they can be lifetime as long as you put up all the.
Right?
Sounds like a, a, a good idea to have that there.
Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, yeah, you know, um, just a, a quick thing here is that I mentioned a lot, what we do that keeps us busy is engagement and community. We have a lot of different organizations. That have something to do with emergencies or disasters or incidents. Uh, so I just throw this out here so that everybody's aware, uh. We do, uh, planning for large events, we've done an event action plan for both last Can't Stand Key. And Symphony End of the Stars, uh, that have been very successful and we are continuing to do that next year. We've got regular meetings with the Lucencourt County Rural Fire Council. Uh, COAD, which is the Community Organizations to Act to the Disaster. We meet monthly with Tri County Fires at Working Group. And then we also have the L E P C, which is the local planning committee. And so these are all groups that we stay engaged with, uh, provide training. Uh, your feedback, we, we ask them a lot of questions, um, whenever we're filling out surveys or whenever we're changing the program. Priorities, we ask for their feedback to make sure that we're doing what. Uh, we also meet with Sam Pito, uh, National Weather Service is a big part of our. And then also, uh, the Montana Disaster Emergency Services Division. We're very lucky, they're based at Rickport, Harrison, but, uh, very easy to drive over there, drink their coffee and spill their pants. Uh, yeah, I did not, I thought it was a book question.
Thank you, Tom, something about you. Thank you. Our next presenter, Jan McColl.
Good morning, commissioners. Chair Payne, Commissioner Anne McColl, Director of Grants and Procurement. Start with our, our bad update for the quarter. Out of our most recent report, which we just admitted that works from July one to September thirty. Our total direct ARCA expenditures are just over twelve point one million, over ninety percent of our total obligation. So in one more year, just over a year more of spending allowance on that, I feel very confident we're gonna be able to vote acceptance on. At that Denver from December thirty-one twenty-six. We have thirteen projects dilactive, that includes eight internal county projects. Three minimum allocation grant projects with water and sewer districts and two community projects. The minimum allocation project, those are the ones that are coming through the Montana Department of Natural History for the conservation. And are helping to support water and sewer updates within the county. Um, overall attract to be completed by the end of this coming December. And then those remaining, uh, direct allocation projects should all be finishing up in the next six to eight months. We're definitely moving forward.
Good.
Um. Alina Moschevi, our accounting rep and grant specialist, is working closely with our accounting office and our contracted auditor, I Bailey. On our second single audit for the year for FY twenty-five, which is only the ARCA program this year, so that's kind of nice. Um, that goes well, it should hopefully be wrapped in one in the next few weeks. On the grants front, we officially closed out the community development lock grants, economic development grant we have with Lawrence Kritman. The CDBT public facilities grant that we have with Craig Water Sewer District is underway in construction activity by the week, just beginning of the last couple weeks. We can have those wrapped up by the end of December and close out a back ranch that happened in early winter. And then we also submitted a CDBT planning grant for a public safety center in Lincoln. And hope to hear from our county department commerce by early December. Um, I have one recommendation for that group.
Just to make sure that you understand this, uh, grant for Lincoln, a public safety center, if you. Give us a little detail about what all entities would be included in that.
Yeah, happy to be so, sure, pain. We presented this project at the Lincoln Government Day back in early October. And it is a project between the Lincoln World Fire District, Lincoln Volunteer Ambulance. And the Lucencourt Sheriff's Office to do a planning project to think about a consolidated centralized public safety center in Lincoln. For those public safety entities. Um, our planning grant request of fifty thousand dollars, and we're able to make a twenty-five percent match. With those entities contributing and hope to be successful.
Thank you.
Other grants awards that we're working on with the department include. The sheriff's office has a long portion of mental health and wellness grant that will be bringing forward to you as the week next week. Working with the planning staff on a closeout of the North Star Park Trail stewardship grant. Which it was fortunate to have all of you attend that after the Lincoln Government Day, happy to see that project, um, be completed and looks beautiful out there. As well as working with, um, the fairgrounds on their, you play around. I've counted staff attended a grants management training with a health here in Helena a couple of weeks ago. It was really great to see staff from CJS, Public Health, uh, at that training, as well as Alina and myself. Main takeaway from this excellent training was the importance of grant management and maintaining compliance and clean audit. Documenting everything that leads to the grants of work process. Understanding and interpreting federal uniform guidance, knowing the basics of grant management, and lastly, knowing to ask for assistance if you don't know. Um, I hope to get a lot of follow-up with the staff within the county that are managing grants on trainings and some of your ideas and right. Federal grant management. As regards to national opioid, we'll give a brief update of where we are on that. Uh, as you're aware, we worked with the sheriff's office and federal justice services in early October on utilizing. The direct opioid funds that the county is receiving to continue the medically assisted treatment program in the detention center. With that obligation, there's currently an unobligated balance of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Of the settlement fund and are under your authority. And we anticipate about seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars coming in annually for calendar year twenty twenty-six. With respect to the Montana Opium Abatement Trust, which I sort of staffed along to, interesting about this one. Seven projects to date have been funded for a total of about nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. The Lucencourt Metro Region Opium Abatement Committee. In their last meeting, did approve moving to a notice of funding availability process, so. Today, the projects that just been kind of rolling, applications have been submitted on a rolling basis. Through this new, uh, NOPA process that's referred to, those will be, um, accepted in spring or reviewed in the spring and in the fall. So we'll have two funding opportunities in here rather than the rolling basis. So the next round application will be reviewed in spring twenty-six. And I expect it FY twenty-seven funding through that program without four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Any questions?
Tom?
Everyone have a question? I just wanna, I just, I, I. I really appreciate your attention to detail and the reports you give us, give us for the, what's going on. Yeah, as a new commissioner, I walk in, uh. With all this special emergency money coming, coming in, uh, from the federal government and. When you took that operation over to oversee that, it's been handled so well and I just want to know how much I personally appreciate. And what you've done to help, help us organize that opioid. But I, uh, I kind of went my way in beyond that. Two years in a row, and I would recommend that when you, uh, be on that, committing the next action somebody. So they can see what's being done and, and, uh, and, and staffing that makes it very.
I should point out, because he will be the chair starting in January, so he can, that's right.
But thank you very much. I really appreciate the detail, appreciate, uh. Knowing where, where we're going with, with these things, it seems to be so many, from, coming from so many different places and. And it's where you know my team over to, uh, every day.
Thank you, Commissioner, I very much appreciate your comments. And I'll, uh, end here just talking about procurement, the last quarter. Major solicitations, the county annex, building condition assessment, that RFQ is currently in review, we hope to have a selected contractor by the end of this week. Casey Hayes, our procurement officer, has also been working closely with the lead coordinator on the mosquito surveillance and abatement program to renew the proposals for that project. As well as, uh, working with Jessica Makus on all those R I D smaller legal contracts that you've been seeing in the last number of weeks. In total, we've done thirty-seven contract cover sheets and contracts since August, um, and then go through October with many of those being those smaller legal contracts. Um, and as you all know, both our department cross cuts all the other departments. And we've been working with, uh, ITF on establishing administrative. The finance department on establishing and managing marketplaces, including animal business and staples business. As well as working with the fairgrounds, which we'll hear about from coming here shortly, a little on birthday, on, um, establishing, establishing process that you've been policy. To allow for flexibility within our procurement policies. Is that all lined up?
Thank you for what we do. Next is, uh, thanks, Thomas, from our IP.
Chair Payne, Commissioner, good morning, Kim Thomas, City and County IP Director. Uh, go through our staff in real quick, um, some good news, uh, we have filled our customer support specialist position, this is our head guest. Uh, terrible by the name, Daniel Henry was selected out of an applicant pool of twenty-two. So we actually got a very good applicant, we're very happy with that. Uh, Daniel brings around ten years of IT experience to us and he actually carries two current IT certifications. So we're pretty excited to have him on for it.
Is he here?
Sure, pain, I did not really.
It's just I need a lot of help with my IT, so I'd like to be able to identify who.
Sure, pain, Commissioner, that will make sure we get him around for interaction. Uh, continuing on the staff in front, um. We have our cybersecurity analyst position that is currently in the recruitment base. Um, they've received a whopping fifty-five applications, uh, in that pool, uh, that is currently going through the scoring page. What we will have, uh, some news on that one here, there. Under their position, uh, Tim two point O or technical implementation actor. Uh, that is posted and has a closing date of November ninth. Um, our unhelpful provides us the after hour support, we run that twenty-four seven right now, and we've been averaging across the last three months with eight calls. So pretty normal, uh, we're encouraged by that, it's not excessive. Very, very manageable. Uh, one highlight, uh, from the last quarter, uh, our GIS manager, Eric Spangenberg. Uh, has been reappointed to the Montana Geospatial Information Advisory Council. Uh, this will be Eric's second term and will run through July of twenty twenty-eight. A little quick blurb on what that council does, council assists the state library. To identify, evaluate and prioritize requests received for the state agents. Local governments and Indian tribal government entities. Provide development and maintenance of services relating to the GIS land information. Fairly notable to Eric, yes, on that committee. Um, I have recorded numerous times on our network modernization project, uh, we are nearing the very end of our phase two. Phase two is inside every building, upgrading of network switches, devices in those buildings. We are down to just the courthouse and the detention center. So those are the two primary buildings we are focusing on now, we've just completed the civic center, we got that updated. Fairgrounds, but it's just a room before the civic center. Um, both the courthouse and the detention center are partially complete, so. We're going to be working with the folks in those buildings to transition them over to networks. Um, we expect to be done within a couple of weeks on that date. Um, we expect to be done within a couple of weeks on that date. Once completed on the uh phase two or the network switches, um, we will be working on the Wi-Fi throughout the organization. A couple of new projects coming up. Uh, just last month, uh, we're doing a contract for Centrally to provide us with secondary internet connection. Uh, we are now working with their building entry team. Very formal, centrally, nevertheless, uh, they are right now targeting that they will have our new fiber internet service ready to connect to us uh right around Christmas. So a little longer than we wanted, but Christmas is here for it all, so be excited about that. Our new phone system, uh, or a new phone system coming that will be cloud-based, running through a few delays. Just trying to schedule with departments that will do their requirements, what they need out of a phone system. Uh, so they are still working through that uh effort. And I think we've got about four or five departments proceeding that are still, uh, we want to still meet with them, make sure we get their needs covered. But we have the best system that should give us as much as possible. Um, diving into cybersecurity, um, we are continually pulling out new updates, uh, new patches across the organization. We use the Microsoft products suite very, very heavily. Uh, and across the last thirty days, our score has improved by roughly four percent. So we're just knocked on the door of what they consider eighty percent secure. There is no hundred percent security uh in the world of today. So we always just try to bring that score as, as high as possible, uh, dealing with all the organizations. Um, diving into security awareness training, uh, you all went through your training, much appreciated. The October was Cybersecurity Awareness Month, so we did some, one training per week. So we rolled out four trainings across this year. We've done eight shorter training modules rather than one, one big effort uh once a year. Our overall completion rates have gone up from roughly in the sixty percent range where we have to start reaching out to directors to get their employees to complete the training. Without IT needing to do that, we actually brought some pretty good score here. For week one training, we, we went all the way up to ninety-two percent complete. So yeah, with that. Week two was ninety-one, uh, week three was eighty-nine. And week four, this is kind of interesting. Week four at the end of Friday was seventy-five percent. End date, but we let them complete late. A lot of people are out, a lot of people have days off, things like that. So we want to give them the opportunity to do the training. But as of this morning, we're up to eighty-one percent. So we're excited. We believe that's gonna reach up into the ninety percent as well. So be excited with our results from the cybersecurity training. Um, lastly, we'll cover uh phishing campaigns. Um, and right now, we're, we're not encouraged with our result. Phishing campaigns show we've got an eleven percent click rate. So when we send out a, what is a known phishing email, it's to test people's um ability to recognize the fish and want directly. Eleven percent is a little bit high. Uh, for an organization this size, we're up to around eight hundred total employees. The company we work to, which is known for, uh, expects we should have a rate down in the three percent range. Eleven is a little bit high. But that does mean that we're going to continue the phishing campaign, get people's education up to a better standard. It just means we have more uh training to do. Keep the awareness very high. Commissioner, that is my summary of this work. That's the answer to your question.
Any questions? Your time.
I, I, just a comment. When you came on board, uh, there was communication problems with uh, the, the department and the city and it seemed like that's all really worked out well. And they seem pleased from every, and they make every indication. Um, thank you for, for a good job of, of uh keeping, keeping things going within the right direction and and that, and building the confidence the city had, had needed to have to stay in this partnership that we, we have for IP. Thank you.
Chair Payne, Commissioner, well, um, absolutely. On my first day, uh, I've evolved, expressed that exact uh situation to me that we want to make sure we get our relationship with our partner, the cities, back to a very high standard we, we have been able to accomplish.
Thank you, James.
Chair Payne, uh, could I just jump in? James, maybe you mentioned this, as it is a, um, did you mention the Wi-Fi central components you've been working on? Uh, Chair Payne, commissioners, rather, I did not yet. Um, that's in the top of my top priority list, but I'm starting to focus. But I did to get that. Yeah, it's just something commissioners, uh, James and his team worked really hard with the uh IT steering committee and the IT board, which Commissioner Ross, you sit on, along with myself and our city partners. That's what reminded me of the interesting city part. So anyway, just a heads up, there's a couple of policies coming our way. There's some working on as well. So.
Thank you.
Chair Payne, well, just to pile on, James, me. Uh, as Commissioner Ross said about the relationship, things that were challenging coming in, and I think your budget as well as your uh personnel issues were also a challenge and um just kudos to you for great work and by you and your team.
Okay, Commissioner.
Thank you, James. That's enough. Terrible. Human resources, very derrocher. Woman of many towns.
Good morning to Payne, Commissioner. So I'm actually made in this very derrocher with a human resources department. Vivian, a recruitment friend, as usual, we have about sixteen recruitments that we're doing this right now in different stages of the process. Um, for the month of October, we hired five people, I didn't remember if we did a term even, but five people left, so um, brought on as many as went off. We um had a hiring event, so Kenny Rose, uh, partners with the sheriff's office in handling and recruitment. And recently did a hiring event at fellow's library, working with members of the sheriff's office to recruit people for the detention center. We felt like it was a really good success. It was a great opportunity and a good job in moving outside the box. Without going outside of our normal process, they were able to um bring a lot of people into the event. So um it was Saturday and Sunday event and they ended up interviewing uh ten people and testing ten people. Five people passed the test and were invited to submit application. Um, once those people submit their application, then they'll go through the background check process. And if they pass that, then they will get interviews with the sheriff. So um, we're excited about getting that many people uh in the doors and interested in a position. Um, unfortunately, there's about at least half that get washed out in the background check process. So we're hoping to get at least a couple out of this group. They already have organized or scheduled another event for February. We also have five interviews this week for detention opposite positions. So hopefully we get to see more of those interviews as well. For union negotiations, we still have that one um contact that we're negotiating. We did go through the one day of mediation. Uh, we didn't have any agreement on that, so we'll continue the association. We also, uh, we don't have any workplace investigations happening right now, which is good, but we do have uh one grievance that we're assisting with. On the benefits and payroll, friend Christina has been busy the last few months providing reports and gathering information for audits. We have our annual uh audit that happens that um she provided a lot of information for. We also get sent through uh an audit for our workers' home. I also had to provide private data and documentation uh for gathering for our help. Do you have that friend? This Thursday, we have our longevity party. Um, at least one, um, that we're going to be doing, we might, uh, we are planning another one for February that will involve a different group of recipients of longevity. They get their signs bi-weekly and through statutory. So we're gonna organize a party to recognize those individuals as well. But for this week's party, it's on Thursday and the number six from three to four. And thank you all for your participation in uh doing the videos and recognizing and attending that party. This year, we're cutting uh, uh, we cut a hundred and twelve checks. And that's for people that have, um, will be needing at least five years with the county this fiscal year for a total of two hundred and twenty-six thousand and sixty thousand. On the health plan through October, our base claims were slightly lower than this point after, which is good news. Uh, we're under by about fifty-seven thousand dollars. For plan year twenty twenty-five, which was ending June thirtieth, our three forty B drug program saved our plan just under a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We also had another uh program called the full pay max program. It's kind of a complicated program and it, it works, uh, deals with um car savings programs with uh pharmaceutical companies, but basically that saved our plan by a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Uh, our drug spending go up a little bit by about seven percent um and a rebate increased by twenty-four percent. So there's a lot of pieces in um play in our drug program, but we're working with our pharmacy benefit manager and all these other players in helping with standard plan and reducing them off. So it's been pretty successful on that front. Uh, let's see, on wellness, uh, we, we got our aggregate status since the time we met on our long screens that we did in the spring. Let's see, so overall, that means all groups on our plan, participation moved down, so that's not good news. Last year it was sixty-four percent and this year went down to fifty-seven percent. As far as the county participation, we also went down, even more significantly, to sixty percent down with them seventy-four and a half percent last year. Although um our outcomes improved and more of the criteria overall, so that would give you although it means the people that aren't meeting criteria aren't participating, that's not good. So um, we'll actually be, I'm currently working on a survey to send to people that, that are enrolled in our health plan that didn't participate. But just trying to figure out why they're not meeting what we need to encourage that participation. As far as the criteria though, we had ninety-two percent of participants that met the cholesterol standard and that was up two percent from last year, so that's good news. Um, fasting glucose, we had eighty-eight percent that met the criteria upon first testing. Um, for the alternative, that was up a percent. Um, the waist measurement uh went up to fifty-four percent, went fifty-one and a half here. And blood pressure uh went down one percent to seventy-seven percent, meaning the criteria. And then mixed means status, which is a voluntary, um measurement people. You asked me a question, a volunteer, did it? We don't measure the mixed means. It's uh ninety percent, which was up from eighty-seven and a half. Some work to do actually. Wellness is going to be one of our focuses this year and it's this um increasing engagement, increasing opportunities, different, different types of challenges uh throughout the year. More on that one. Also have a lot uh going on in safety. So Kenny Rose, who's our safety coordinator, uh, she coordinated earthquake safety drill this year. Uh, we invited both city and county employees across the um county to do that. Um, in our building, we read that, um we sent out information to try to get people to think about planning for family and then responding in an earthquake situation. We did learn some things from that response. We also learned something from the evacuation where we had to do after that public meetings in October. And Kenny will be working with the safety, county safety committee as well and uh, safety committee that repairs the city and kind of improving and getting there. I think that's all I have for today. Any questions for me?
Thank you for your hard work. Thank you, your court. Extension services. I see you, Peggy.
We have, okay, Professor Schmidt, except for looking for county extensions. Uh, we have four different ways to update you on. I'll just walk through the different pieces of it. Firstly, Sophia Franz-Libert is our agriculture and horticulture agent. She attended pesticide trade in Pecan County. She's also attended the annual conference, I said Jane, our new family consumer finances agent. Sophia did a free workshop for members. It was a tree dormancy workshop with thirty participants that came. I'll feedback on that. Uh, we had a specialist come from M and S as well, so that was a nice turnout for that group, with a few members. Uh, she was six different site visits. She's actually on site visit right now in the Northern Valley. She's probably sitting here right now. Um, and she and I both completed dossier reviews for agents that are looking to be on tenure. So that was, yeah, because it was the last one. For four H, we have a bumper crop of people enrolling for four H this year. We have over four hundred members enrolled and that is in one month versus six months of enrollment last year. So in one month, we received as much enrollment as we did in six months of last year. So that's one thing. We have thirteen hundred projects that are currently um being requested as workshops. Our volunteer enrollment is also up, so we have over a hundred volunteers. Last year, we have over a hundred volunteers. Again, in one month versus six months, so we're expecting those numbers to continue to rise. We had our county open house, which was well attended with over a hundred members from our community coming to see what four H has offered for them. And that's always been so successful since our members are here. Uh, ambassadors were featured on Mighty Mo and they did a kickoff for four H week, which was at the beginning of October. Um, we did window display, Hayville Comcast and a few fundraisers and everybody wore green to highlight the four H week, which began in October. Um, we have over sixty programs scheduled for indoor as well outdoor this year. We also updated our website and our phones and did all of our training for IT. So that was a very successful month for us with IT. So thank you to them. Uh, they have a great staff for us and they've been really, really supportive and getting everybody up and running, which makes our process a lot easier for new members. We also completed our fall awards committee, highlighting um Karen Hamilton, who had had almost fifty-seven years, or fifty-six years of four H volunteering as an adult member for us. So we highlighted her as well as probably fifty other members from there. That was an awards event that um we put on to show where Dave Kirkus, there's all of that kind of stuff. So the kids can be there and then the treaty of all their successes from there. Um, which is, it's a fun night for everybody. We also did, um Jeanie Lowery has joined us. She has hit the ground running. She is our family consumer finances representative and agent. She has done food and baby training, uh, power of attorney training. She has started the strong people classes again. Those will be on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Probably beginning of January, maybe of the year. She's been laying out the foundations for that. She's met with folks in Agatha um and made some connections there to discuss their needs in regard to home healthcare, aging services, meal preparation, nutrition, science, bodybuilding, healthcare, parenting training, baby filter training. She also kind of has training for rural community builder summit in Deer Lodge in October. So she's doing a great job. And she was a presenter at the M and S extension conference, is what you know, conference that we do, as well as um attended of the workshop for that. Lastly, is SNAP education, which is Chloe from the first, and Chloe will be leaving the office at the end of the year. Um, her funding is ending, uh, she's a federal employee. So it's been a lovely time being with her, but she is not going out quietly. She taught five nutrition and physical activity classes for adults. She taught four nutrition and physical activity. She taught four nutritional physical activities for five of our elementary school children. She taught six nutrition classes for the Lincoln Public Schools with them, which was them four years in the making to get the the training developed for that group. And she was able to complete that. She also did eight nutritional physical activity training for older, so that was fifteen months for her. And the river is not making any slower, but those are our updates. Did you have any questions?
The, it seems like you're you're able to keep a larger staff than we had in the past. That's worked out well.
It's been great. It's wonderful to have everybody available for this meeting. Um it's been good, a lot of traffic into the office. We are hiring a new administrative assistant, HR is in helping us with that. And we met with the best process as well, to make sure that we understood the budget and how that all worked, so that would be great training for us to have. Um and that too helps us with recruiting, so we can understand where the money can go and how things should be thought appropriately, what the expectations are.
One clarification, did you just say you hire women exclusively?
No, no, I said we're hiring at the extension agency for our administrative business. I'm on call sometimes, I apologize.
I thought you said you're talking about women, this was aimed at women.
Oh, no, no, we hire anybody that can keep up with four H's.
Thank you.
Yeah, our um HR, the young analyst, Ken Burks, is really fantastic in helping us with recruiting. So she's with the three interviews on Friday, and one of them looked very hopeful, so I'll be with them.
Thank you for your hard work.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Uh, Yeller McRide, criminal justice services, now follow us.
Good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioner. I'm pleased to share highlights from the, I'm telling you, right, director of your department of criminal justice services. Whether it's color or hair, they're gone. Um I'm pleased to share highlights from the Department of Criminal Justice Services for the month in being October twenty-five. Uh staffing and personnel, our hiring efforts can can continue to strengthen our department. We have offered the data analyst supervisor position to an exceptional candidate. And that individual has accepted. I don't know the start date. I will find that out tomorrow. Um Casey Rollers had accepted our pre-trial and was, you know, her big change officer position. That was a business of the victim by Bob Bussey when he was promoted to supervisor. So um Casey Rollers joined us yesterday. It was her first day and just excited to have her on the team. She brings some great experience um working in the criminal justice system. We've also posted our data coordinator position that um posted and and will close at this month. Um and that will help, that role will help bring our data dashboards fully online and improve transparency across programs. So speaking of data, our team has been working hard on data visibility in anticipation of our data team joining C J F. We are working faithfully with public health and their epidemiologists to get ahead of and get some some greater utilization out there before our our new data staff start. So we'll have something there, and I'm just so thankful to our partnership with public health. Um so this week, we are focusing on updating our public dashboards, showing detention center data, uh pre-trial outcomes and past program data. And also I want to um thank Betsy. She has helped us uh with the format. Betsy Kirksey has helped us with our webpage, um so just redoing it so it's even easier to read. So just thankful to her or her our county family. Uh court services and diversion, pre-trial case law remained steady, about a hundred, five hundred fines per officer with roughly thirty uh folks in the past program. Past stands for post adjudication supervision services, the misdemeanor conviction code. And there's about thirty folks there. Uh during the week of October twentieth, so just a one week, so actually, our officers had contact with over two hundred individuals and attended seventeen different courts from municipal and justice to behavioral health court. Uh speaking of behavioral health court, it was recognized that there were individuals in the detention center who um were invited to observe behavioral health court to see if that would be a good debate for them. There was no way for them to get from the detention center over to the uh because of being short-staffed in the detention center. They couldn't get folks from the detention center over to the courthouse to observe. Uh our officer, Ethan Welch, who formerly worked in the detention center, uh said, why didn't he pass volunteer? Those people will be escorting those individuals that are identified from the detention center over to the courthouse. It's just a nice fit. It works well, and I just appreciate our staff recognizing, seeing a need and recognizing how they could address that. So working with the detention center that, uh well, now folks that can observe. Uh we're also preparing for the first bond review roundtable that will be on November fourteenth. That will bring together judges, prosecutors, law enforcement, and criminal justice services staff to examine cases where individuals remain detained due to unaffordable cash bond. Uh this was a, this roundtable was the brainchild of the criminal justice coordinating council's jail population task force. Not a lot of words, but um. And then speaking of that, that bond review, so how that started, uh Jessica in our office, which is our court services assistant. She puts together a week that's called the bond roster. But it's data that comes into all these fields that tells us individuals to assign their patrol services, who also have a cash bond, uh what their charges are, uh the very detailed picture of folks in the detention center. And uh that's what the the task force was using to recommend a payback from folks in the detention center that probably should be out in the community. Um I just want to give a shout out to Jeff because the state uh office for administrator saw that bond roster. And they were so impressed, they had her explain it to them, and today she's presenting it uh to a statewide group. Um so they're wanting to get that bond roster out. Very cool. Um our staff are doing some great stuff. Finally, uh we did submit a Department of Justice grant proposal. Thank you for approving that uh for our four-year arrest diversion program. Uh significant, it gave a significant opportunity to further reduce unnecessary detention. And behavioral health, our behavioral health team continues to make a strong impact inside the detention center and in the court. Although the Matt Bridges grant ended in September, services for people with opioid use disorder have continued seamlessly. And as Anne mentioned, we supported the sheriff's office in their request of county opioid settlement funds to sustain those efforts. We are uh expecting an amendment soon to extend the heart grant through June twenty twenty-six, ensuring uninterrupted behavioral health services and reimbursement at the state grant that helps support our behavioral health work. To date, our team has distributed one thousand three hundred ninety-three meloxone kits, tell me why. Great number. Uh the team continues to provide critical discharge planning, collaborates with the sheriff's office medical staff, and we host a Carroll College practicum student, expanding our community's behavioral health capacity. Training and professional development, uh Bob Bussey, Ethan Welch, and I attended the Montana Board of Crime Control crime prevention conference, which provided post-credits uh and valuable networking statewide. Uh and as Anne mentioned, uh Julian Demese and Ethan Welch attended the Grant Management USA training, enhancing our capacity to manage and sustain grant funding. The Citizens Advisory Committee, Matt, October seventeenth, entered time to celebrate a member of Mark May's five years of sobriety. Not only that, but that his um his conviction was uh he wins. Uh so he no longer has a conviction on his on his record. It was a remarkable milestone and was celebrated. We surprised him. Um was pretty wonderful to have his coworkers, his family, uh members of the C J C C and the C A C there too, just to celebrate the individual that he is. Um Mark Phillips experienced by his professional role as a peer support specialist at St. Peter's Health really embodied the bridge between our justice system and community recovery. The C A C also reviews, reviewed proposed bylaw revision, and the next C J C C meeting will be held November twenty-third. And I'll close with that. Any questions?
We have such an exciting community of people looking out for our citizens and everything, thank you. Next, I'll give. Grenda Neiman. There she is.
Okay, good morning, Chair Payne, Commissioners. My name is Brenda Neiman. I'm the health officer, department director for Work and Spark Health. We also have some brilliant, great things happening, and I'm excited to share with you. This past Sunday, we hosted our first annual community baby shower. Uh we had sixty-five pregnant women that were celebrated and have attended the baby shower with their um support person, their partner, their husband, or their family member, Neiman, and celebrated their um their baby that's coming. Um this was do, um this was possible because we received over two thousand dollars in cash donations from the community as well as thousands of dollars worth of baby items. Um we had some grant funds that we also used to help support the the overall effort for this community that we set up. And the the idea behind the community baby shower was to ensure that families bringing home that new baby had a good, a good start. We know how expensive the babies can be, and some of our families don't get, um don't get baby showers. And so we were really um kind of obliged obliged to be asked for families in our community, and so that was um just this past Sunday, and it was beautiful. It was really, uh if you follow us on Facebook, I'm sure there's gonna be some some pictures and some highlights from that event, so it was really great. Um WIC, not such great news. Um those are federal funds that um have not yet been appropriated by the federal government because of the shutdown. And the state of Montana is using funds, state funds, to keep the program going until the end of November. Um at the end of November, there will no longer be state funds, and if the federal funds kind of come through, um we do have a contingency um of our public health funds to keep staff um on board. But we do not have a contingency for the the food benefits that families receive when they go through our WIC program. And we serve seven hundred a month families in our area. And so, you know, fingers crossed, I guess, that Congress gives an appropriation to pass so that WIC can be funded appropriately. But that is something that we're watching very closely and advocating that those funds do come through, so families aren't impacted by the law. Um our opioid overdose prevention and our safer communities Montana program, uh so safer communities Montana, harm reduction, suicide prevention work. Um lots of really great uh distribution of harm reduction items in the past six months. We've distributed over fifteen hundred gum locks, um six hundred and eighty-four packets of heroin packages, which um uh it's um deactivate any kind of medication, so prescription medications that are lingering in in the medicine cabinet. The heroin will deactivate them, and it's the proper way to dispose of them so that they're not lingering around the house. Um a hundred and sixty-one locking pill bottles, uh two hundred and forty fentanyl test drugs, and again, over fifteen hundred uh pet not cans. So um our opioid prevention program's been working hard to get those items out into the community to keep health safe. Um our behavioral health systems improvement specialist, um Jolene Jennings, she resigned from her position at Abra back. And we've been working trying to get that position built, and we did offer the position and that individual accepted. And we'll be starting there in the next couple of weeks, so we're excited to get that um that work supported again by a staff. From May to October, we held twenty-eight immunization events in our community, uh across and across the county. Um we reached long-term care, assisted living facilities, schools. Uh we did an event at Food Share, county employees benefited from a food shop clinic. We went out to Augusta and Leaden, East Carolina, and many, many more. So uh we were just out there in that mobile clinic that we have in partnership with Pure New Health Center um doing S T I testing, Narcan distribution, and lots of vaccines um in the last few months. We hosted a well-insectic workshop out at the Birdby Fire Hall. And about fifty community members attended to learn more about their wells and their septic and how to test their water to make sure that their well water doesn't have any um contamination that would impact their health and then maintenance of their septic system, which is really important. So getting fifty participants out for a well-insectic workshop was pretty exciting for us. Um we collaborated with the fire chief council to update our burn permit processes to better enforce our air quality ordinance. So that was a good partnership with the fire council, and that resulted in some um a great update to the way for burn permits that are issued in our county. Um we also have done a really great update to our data dashboard out on our website so that the public have easy access to communicable disease data. So our epidemiologist launched this um expansion of our data uh data portal, adding access to communicable disease surveillance um across the county. The data shows trends in the county for food and weight and waterborne illnesses, respiratory, and other direct contract contact illnesses, S T Bs and S T Is, and bloodborne pathogens as well as vector borne or visible critters. Let's see, this vector one, and and other environmental illnesses. So um if you're looking for continued updates to our data dashboard, um she's working on behavioral health and wastewater surveillance to be added to that data dashboard in the next few months. Let's see, so also what to expect from public health in the next few months. We're continuing to work on the septic inventory to get a better understanding of septic systems um that exist in the county. Uh we know what the permitted septic systems are, but anything that was installed prior to seventy-three uh or not, we didn't have a permitting process in place, and so we don't have a good idea of those older failing septic systems. So that inventory is underway. Uh we are working with some really great stakeholders with the city and the county, East Carolina and the Helen Citizen Council um to do some neighborhood party and uh with the neighborhood party initiative in the spring and and through the summer of next year. Um the purpose of this is to enhance community connectedness and also improve um public emergency care of this. So we know that when neighbors neighbors know each other and know um if there are some functional needs, somebody with a disability in their neighborhood, um that it's gonna be the neighbors that help first before the first responder is able to get there. And so this is an effort to try to get neighborhoods together and expand what that assets are, what resources they have, what challenges they might have during um during an emergency um issue. Let's see, we're gonna be doing um an S T I or or sexually transmitted infection campaign to reach youth in our community with prevention and testing messaging. We're gonna be launching a customer test action plan in twenty twenty-six, so we're preparing for that now. Um our current three-year strategic plan fires in twenty twenty-six, so we'll be engaging in a facilitated process to update and develop a new three-year strategic plan for public health, as well as our workforce development plan. So it will be fresh and new um in twenty twenty-six. Uh we are also working with community partners to draft an opioid overdose spike response plan. So when you see an opioid overdose spike happen in our area, um in our jurisdiction, um what are we as a community going to do to respond to that, to that fight? That plan, there's a meeting in December, the four partners together to develop that plan. And we continue to support the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, um around their remediation activities out in East Carolina um regarding super fun site and the lead contamination in soils. And then again, the And then, um, again, the, um, data dashboard is just something that we're very proud of. Um, that, that continuing to be built out and that data will be easily accessible by anyone in our community that's looking for information. So that is my report for this quarter and happy to answer questions.
I might, I, I just really appreciate you and your financial staff with the way you put together the budget this year with all the uncertainties you're facing with federal funding. I think it's really critical. Thank you though for, for, uh, the way you worked through that. And thank you for, for employee engagement with the capital bond. And, uh, thank you. Thank you.
Andy, is it going to be a month?
I actually would, yeah.
I felt a lot.
Okay. Thank you, Brenda. Jenny Chambers. Ooh, she's in there. And are you sneaking out? Why is your note, your note? Okay. Well, thanks for sticking around.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. The record, my name is Jenny Chambers. I'm with our twenty in Public Works Department, Department Director. Um, in my monthly reports, I provide more information, a lot more detail, but I'm just going to highlight a few things today. Um, one project that elevated to a high priority was it was identified, was the completion of the school zone traffic evaluation. The placement of new traffic control sign, passage of the school ordinance. Um, the question of the side placement was raised in the Warren School. The public works decided to be proactive and elevate a school zone area traffic investigation study for all of the county jurisdiction schools within the county. And please report that all of the signs have been relocated and or new signs have been installed in accordance with the order that you cast on October twenty-first. I'd also like to highlight, um, some of the work in our rich department. Um, as you are, are you, uh, know from a past report, the Head Lane Bridge, uh, was completed. Um, this was the NSF project, um, it's, the bridge is open. Um, the deck has been painted. And then the deck from the Head Lane was relocated. If you recall, we were used and recycled the Head Lane Bridge that we replaced and moved it to Glass Drive. Uh, Glass Drive Bridge Deck has been also completed and that is now open as well. We are just waiting on MDT load rating to get new signs posted for the Glass Drive Bridge, which we think is going to increase the weight restriction on that bridge. Uh, with this effort of replacing Head Lane Bridge and then taking Head Lane Bridge on the Glass Drive. So, so good to hear the report.
I just wanted to comment that this is such a great example of recycling. John.
And then over the winter and next several months, um, we continue to finalize outreach and engagement for, uh, many projects in the planning department. Um, one is the City of Helena and County Infrastructure Study and also a subdivision regulation update. Infrastructure Study will have another presentation on November twenty-fourth at eleven thirty in this room. Room three twenty-six followed by an open house until one thirty. The existing conditions report will be finalized. And also the focus of this meeting will be on proposed alternatives and cost estimates for the future conditions report. So we're talking about the, uh, county area urban boundary around the city of Helena. What are those alternatives and cost estimates for improving and getting access for water, wastewater, stormwater, fire within that urban boundary of the city of Helena? In addition, um, we're working hard on the subdivision regulations update. Staff is finally commenting for our consultant to, uh, prepare a public review draft document. Once that drafted ready, it will be sent out to stakeholders for comments, followed by open house and then the public review process will begin. This all will happen, um, this winter timeframe, um, as well. Both public works and fine staff are also part of the Metropolitan Planning Organization uh, effort to continue and to be engaged and work through the long-range transportation plan. Uh, this long-range transportation plan is a twenty-year horizon. So what the transportation needs are in the Metropolitan Planning Organization. This would be the City of Helena, City of East Helena, and Lewis and Clark County, and the Montana Department of Transportation. There's a dedicated webpage for the public to follow this as well and also an improved public participation plan. This effort will continue through twenty twenty-six. Um, today you also heard some, um, actions on the Village Police or rent regulation updates. Thank you for, um, approving that legislation to comply with the central one seventy-four requirement. Also, a lot of the efforts for the RIA program on the snowplow contract and other grant opportunities, uh, grants, seal applications we continue to work through on the winter, uh, ever finding for best summer, uh, projects moving forward. Road Bridge and Shop have been doing fall grading of weather, weather allowance. Um, as a weather hole, they continue to grade. They fixed guard rail, they finished and fixed and repaired bridge decks. Uh, maintenance staff have been busy with preparing equipment for winter and include, um, prepared preparation of all the snow piles. All the snow piles are ready to go. They've been distributed out to Augusta, Wolfbridge, and Lincoln, as well as any, um, other equipment that we have, such as the four-wheeler up in Augusta to help us know a little at the Augusta Senior Center, um, has been ready to go for this winter. In addition, though, we each frame equipment has been winterized. Um, all the public water supplies, um, irrigation wells have been, um, blown out and, and prepared for winter as well. So we're just geared up for the upcoming season. Um, as I close, I wanted to share a few photos to highlight a few other projects. Um, and as Albert Einstein said, one picture is worth a thousand words. So I would not have been able to describe this stuff to you without just showing the photos. Um, Jeff, Jancy in our building's maintenance department finished painting a very large project at the famous shop of the county building. Uh, all the brown you see on the right after view is fresh paint. Um, it's not only, it makes it a visual, um, benefit to the complex to be proud of the work that we're trying to do and, and to recognize where we work. It is also a needed maintenance activity. I don't know when the last time this was painted, but we were starting to get weathering and, and water impacts. Um, and that sign was just not going to, um, hold up if we didn't get some, some, um, fresh paint on that as far as ongoing maintenance. So one morning, um, Clay Cotto, our bridge manager, sent me this photo of Jeff, um, on the lift, uh, very early in the morning. Um, it was a kind of a cool picture to include to you for you guys. So big, big project there. Uh, this one was mentioned a little bit by Anna Colleen, who helped with the grants and purchasing department, um, to help the public county staff do the North Star Park grant application and then help with some of the grant closeout efforts with this project. But there you have Angie and Lindsay at, um, Doorstar Park and, uh, just to, to, to name the trail on the project there moving forward. Uh, long-term, um, the staff will continue to look for grant opportunities and, and funding sources to do the next phases of that master plan that you approved, um, as the opportunities become available. And last, um, i- in spirit of the Operation Green Light, which is starting next week, um, maintenance staff are getting ready to get the green lights put in place that we have our, our building piloting for, for next week. Uh, and these are just some of the great pictures that we have from twenty twenty-four and of what they're going to look like, um, this upcoming year. So with that, this is our presentation and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jen. And, and what are you doing? Your chair time?
You know, I probably bowl. It's probably what I do.
Oh. Um, we have been at this for two hours. It is eleven o'clock. There is a gentleman in the back row who I don't think is here for a report on what's going on. I think he's here for the board appointment. You're not? Okay. Then we will continue. Beg your pardon?
Oh, you asked me if I liked the appointment.
Good. All right. He's the Kevin Tenny is up there and he is not here. So we can one hand do some of those. If you're not here, protect yourself.
So Chair and Commissioner, yes, we continue having a few. Uh, maybe I could let you know a couple of quick things, uh, careful, yeah. On Thursday, Commissioners, you're going to be looking at three different resolutions associated with fairgrounds regarding a name change that's an administrative process that we need to go through for some clarity. And also a resolution that, uh, formalizes and that is the, uh, purchasing, uh, authorization that our fair manager has to secure ins for us out of the fairgrounds. And, uh, excuse me, Commissioners, it, it, uh, also, uh, the paving project, which has been such a big project for us using ARPA funds, is largely complete out of the fairgrounds as well. So there's a very quick update, uh, but Kevin did have to leave.
I was sitting in a meeting the other day. They were talking about the roundabout there at the corner of Henderson and Custer. We, who are the final funding to this time now? Is that what that was about?
Um, Commissioner, uh, Commissioners, um, yes, uh, that was also an ARPA project. Uh, we entered into a partnership with the City of Helena. And, um, it involved, uh, uh, the paving project and we allocated some of our ARPA monies to help pay for the design work of that roundabout that you referenced.
Okay. Bye.
I'll be back.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so what about Frank Cornell? He's not here.
Uh, Chair and Commissioner, no, I don't see Frank with us today. He must have been delayed a little bit.
Well, he can give us a report to take Kevin Tenny dead six. Okay. Last thing on our agenda today is the board appointment. Roger?
Chair and Commissioners, this is item four J on your agenda for consideration today. You have the backup memo. It's been prepared. I'll read it into the record for your consideration. The, these candidates beat the qualifications for consideration of the board that you're considering today. This is for the airport board of adjustment. This is a six-person board with three seats appointed on the county. Trevor Kirkland resigned news of being appointed to the airport authority board. Peter Strauss supplied. There were no other applicants. Uh, action staff recommends that the Commissioners consider the applicant to a partial term that will expire June thirty, two thousand and twenty-eight. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Roger. Um, let's see, is there any questions from the Commission? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, I would indicate a motion.
Chair and Actuary, we have appointed Peter Strauss to the airport board of adjustment as presented by Mr. Boss.
Okay. Been moved and seconded that we should appoint or approve the appointment of Peter Strauss to the airport boarding board. Um, okay, for you.
Board of adjustment.
Board. Oh, I'm sorry. This is the airport board of adjustment. Let's get the names of the board right. Okay. Is there any further comments on this matter?
Chair and, uh, just wanted to say, I think Peter Strauss did a great job. Uh, he's been interested in serving in a role either on the board of adjustments or the airport board for a while now. And, uh, so I'm happy that we're able to get him to this board. I think they'll be better for it.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Agree with, agree with Commissioner.
Okay, we ask for public comment. Okay. It has been moved and seconded. We've discussed it. We've asked for public comment and now all those in favor of approving the appointment of Peter Strauss to the airport authority board of adjustment. Oh, that's why I'm getting confused. It's the next one. It's for Trevor Kirkland. So all those in favor of appointing Peter Strauss to the airport board of adjustment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion varies unanimously. There was a gentleman who spent a whole two hours waiting and left. Okay. Um, we've reached that point of our meeting where I call for public comments on any public matter within jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda above. Seeing no public comment, this meeting is adjourned.